Let me call the public here and for April 12th, um, call the order, roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Janice Carter Beard? Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
Number one, an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code regarding the duties and authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended approval by Planning and Zoning Commission, Josh Taylor.
Um, it had to do with, um, dual holding, dual, not offices, dual roles. If you, Andre may be able to explain this a little better, this was an Andre catch.
Yes, just very briefly, we're going back to the way we had it before, we adopted the Unified Development Code, that basically the Planning and Zoning Commission is gonna serve the function of the Board of Adjustment without the city having to appoint a whole other people. So that would be a dual office problem if they had both positions. So all this is just cleaned up to go back to where we had it before. So the Planning and Zoning would serve the same function.
So it was change in Unified Development Code without realizing what problem it would cause, basically?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
We have any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Item number two, an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Infinite Investments LLC to rezone Lot 8 in Block 78 of the higher survey located at 306 South Oak Street from RM2 to MXC in accordance with survey by William J. Bowden Jr. dated 1/21/2016, recommended approval by zoning commission, Josh.
This is the house we're all familiar with, with the white pillars on South Oak, pretty rough-looking place. The owners came in, kinda asking what they could do with it, and we encouraged them to rezonate to mixed use. It's part of our future land use map is mixed use. And to be honest, what it was zoned, you were kinda limited what you could do with it. So, uh, we wanted to incentivize tearing it down, putting something new there. The plan right now is to get it rezoned and then demo it this year and rebuild it next year with a fourplex. So, the fourplex would have to meet all codes, all ordinances, but that's everything else. So, that's the plan. We went with MXC because MXN, um, if they rezoned to MXN, the lot, it was already gonna be a non-conformity because of lot size. So we went with MXC, it fits the MXC, um, lot dimensions, so.
Just for the record, RM2 is...
Is residential multifamily, allows for a single-family house or duplex, that's it.
And MXC is?
Is mixed-use commercial, it allows some commercial, some mixed-use live-work units, um, apartments, um, duplexes, condos, it's kinda that mixed-use function that you get kinda downtown feel.
But where is it, where is South Oak Street exactly?
South Oak Street is, um, the new development, that whole block, it would be the, it'd be the...
It's down from, down from the fire department on the opposite side of the street.
If you click on the packet, you may see the photograph on page two.
It's, it's the block south of the detectives, the new police building, the old bank, it's the block south of that.
It's a horrible construction, needs to be, any improvement would be. Any further questions from the council? Any public input? Item number three, an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Play and Stay Incorporated, Clarence and Linda Whittington to rezonate a 90-by-660-foot parcel in the southeast quarter of Section 26 Township 6, South Range 7 East, located at 506 JW Davis Drive from RS3 to M, to RM3, recommended approval by zoning commission.
This is a very deep vacant lot currently on JW Davis. The owner wants to rezonate to multifamily and put apartments. It, it's surrounded by residential multifamily three already on the south side, so, on the north side has RM2, which is multifamily duplexes and houses, but ultimately around there it was already rental units, and so, planning commission felt okay with rezoning, recommending rezoning. Again, this one too, will have to meet all the ordinances as far as parking and setbacks and all that stuff, this is just to rezonate to make it eligible for that.
Any questions from the council? Any public input? Item number four, an ordinance to approve rezoning request by White Oaks Enterprise Incorporated and Clarence and Linda Whittington to rezone 0.56 acres, Lot 1 of Whittington Subdivision, a lot measuring 203.51 by 332.51, and .075 acres being located at 205, 203, 113, and 109 White Street from RM2 to RM3, recommended approval by zoning commission.
Um, same thing, the same owner actually, um, wants to do the same thing, rezonate from RM2 to RM3, build apartments. For this one, it's, it's several lots that will have to be combined into one to do the development. It also has RM3 to the west of this property adjacent, so, it's a pretty big area of RM3 already there, so, recommended approval.
Any questions for Josh? Any public input?
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Moving right into our regular scheduled meeting, roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Janice Carter Beard? Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
Reverend Maryland, would you lead us in a prayer please?
Just by your head please. My Father, we come, we thank thee that been so good and so kind to us, and I pray thee bless them that's here this afternoon, let my Father do the thing that is right, look on the mayor, all the councils with them, let everything, what they do, the people look and say thank you, those who are here today, take care of them, cause Father, we all got down to you that day, we hear you say well done, our sons in Jesus' name we do pray, amen.
Invite all veterans and active military, render a proper salute. Council Blunt, would you lead us in a prayer please?
I look to thee as the leader of the United States of America, and to the Republic for its defense, one nation, unafraid, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any council reports? Mayor?
Uh, as you know, we won the district contest, and we're moving on to the state contest, which will be April 22nd, uh, the judges will be coming through, so, uh, once again, we are fighting to be what, 10 years now, straight? So hopefully we can get that, we have a lot of good people in the city who are helping us, a lot of volunteers, uh, thank you, Mr. Louise, for what you do as well. Also, good news, we've had lots of people, especially Mr. Cox, I don't know if many of you know Mr. Cox, who has a radio station in Deacon, uh, but he's been pushing me to get going to Corral in Hammond, and it looks like Golden Corral is pushing forward for the Ryans Building, so that thing, uh, I believe that's gonna work out for us. So that's a, a good, uh, asset for the city to pick up that building as quickly as it just emptied out, which has only been, I think, two months. As well, uh, the University Crossing, the railroad tracks, I don't know if anyone's crossed over those railroad tracks on University Avenue, but, uh, Regional Planning Commission put up $337,000, I'd asked them a year ago to help us out with that, and they, uh, have stepped up, they put up $250,000, and a bid came in at 337, and they fully funded that railroad crossing for us, so, that is the, uh, the product of being part of the, that are, uh, planning organization that we're now in, and, uh, the Regional Planning Commission gets federal dollars, give them to the state, and they help with road projects throughout the, uh, state, so that's big for us here. Uh, as well, there's North Oaks Park, we poured some concrete last week, and we'll be having a big playground built, and that will be on, uh, May the 13th and the 14th, May 13th we'll unload trucks, May 14th we'll be building the playground equipment, so anyone willing to come help us out, we'll take any volunteers, appreciate it, Kwanis will be out there with us as well. That's my report.
All right. Um, do we have any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? All right, um, approval of minutes, if everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of March 22nd, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard? You don't have to call her, she's nice. Okay. Motion carried.
Resolutions, old business none, new business. Number one, a resolution authorizing La Corada Mexican Cuisine to get a waiver of the open container law for Cinco de Mayo celebration on May 5th, 2016, from 2:00 PM till 10:30 PM, within the boundaries of Charles Street to Rariter Avenue and part of the Casa de Fraser Parking Mall. Nicole Anthony.
Yes. Um, we just need the noise ordinance, street closure and parking mall closures.
Cinco de Mayo already again, huh? Seems like. Any questions for Nicole?
Motion to approve.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number two, hang on one second. A resolution authorizing La Corada Mexican Cuisine located at 108 Northwest Rariter Avenue to sell alcohol on sidewalk in front of the restaurants on May 5th, 2016, from 2:00 PM until 10:30 PM. You guys gonna be checking, uh, IDs and...
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Roll call please.
Give me a second.
Uh, Johnny, Councilman Blunt.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Nicole, good luck. Number three, a resolution to approve the nomination of Bruce O'Kreppke to the Hammond Downtown Development District Board to fill a vacancy representing the majority property owners for the remainder of the two-year term, from April 13th, 2016 to December 31st, 2017. Melanie, is not here.
I can address this one. Uh, your packet is attached, you'll find both a letter recommending, uh, the two appointments that they're seeking to make, this one and the next one, um, you'll also find attached to that letter on the third page is, uh, information about Bruce O'Kreppke and his background, and then on the last page is information about Jonathan Wong, the next applicant.
Any questions for Lacy?
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Item number four, a resolution to approve the nomination of Jonathan Wong to the Hammond Downtown Development District Board to finish the remainder of a two-year term of Cindy Shelton representing the majority property owners from April 13th, 2016 to December 31st, 2016.
To be clear on both of these, I didn't mention this on the first one, they are just taking the remainder of terms, there was one that was just a completely vacant position, but they wanna make sure that their staggered terms keep that staggered, so, that's why Bruce O'Kreppke is set to the term limit that he is, and then Jonathan Wong is fulfilling the rest of Cindy Shelton's vacancy and serving out the rest of her term.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Hammond and the State of Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, grant funds of $1,600 for the project Radio Traffic Recording System for the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, it's real straightforward, and, uh, I may have mentioned it, uh, in passing, uh, before, but, uh, since the tower came on board back in March of last year, our, our operations have pretty much doubled, uh, as we're, as we're measuring them between 8:00 in the morning and 6:00 at night. This is an important metric that we use, or that the state uses, and the FAA uses to determine where we, where we rank, uh, in competition with our fellow, uh, our fellow airports for federal and state funding. One of the things that we're not capturing right now is, uh, those after-hours, uh, flying activities, so, this system, it's a $3,200 system, obviously the, the state will pay half, will pay half, that, uh, allows us, uh, to track these, these after-hours flights between the hours of 8:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning when the tower's not open. And it basically operates off a, off a proprietary software algorithm that calculates the number of, of aircraft activities by the number of radio transmissions. It's very basic.
Any questions, Dave?
Those, the $1,600 comes from the airport?
It's coming out of my airport, uh, maintenance budget, essentially.
Motion to approve.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you, Dave. Item number six, a resolution, one, approving and application for $250,000 of land and water conservation funds administered by the Louisiana Office of State Parks Division of Outdoor Recreation for Zemary Park and Park Improvements, Phase Three, Zemary Swimming Pool, Two, agreeing to a cash match of $250,000, and Three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents, Charles.
This is, uh, for Phase Three, we just completed Phase Two, um, Phase Three was always envisioned as being completely a swimming pool, renovation of the swimming pool, um, grant match will come from the Grant Match Fund.
I have a question, Mr. President. We, uh, we currently only have $250,000 budgeted in the Grant Match Fund. We've already met some grants, matched, matches already this year, I don't remember how much, so, uh, what are we gonna do about that?
Right now, we have about $400,000 in the Grant Match Fund. Uh, we've actually done pretty good this year in not tapping that, using existing departmental budgets to, to cover the matches, so, uh...
But, maybe I didn't make my point clear, currently, we only have $250,000 approved through the budget of, in the match, in the Grant Match Fund. I do see the $400,000, but approved for expenditures is $250,000.
Two things, one, you're correct, you're seeing what was allocated for, for spending for this year. We're not actually spending this money, uh, because we don't come to, we come to you with a contract once we get the grant in hand. This is permission to submit a grant application that may require a match of up to this amount, but we will come to you again with a contract, and at that time, those, those are when the funds would be pulled out from the Grant Match account.
I, I totally understand that, I'm just trying to get ahead of the game a little bit and just kinda inquire, 'cause this, this eats up the, if this were approved, and, and if I'm not mistaken, this, this does authorize, maybe it doesn't authorize the expenditure, but it does authorize, as I said, the mayor to sign all documents, so, I just wanted to get ahead of the game a little bit and find out, like I said, about the money, because this would eat up everything that was approved for the expenditure.
Last time, the difference between when this grant application was submitted?
Okay.
And when we received a contract was roughly a year and a half? Is that correct?
This, uh, this application, excuse me, the full application isn't due until June 1st.
Okay.
So, the, the reality is, we won't be approving a contract if we're successful with the application until the next fiscal year.
Okay.
But let's ask the question another way, 'cause I, is there a carryover in the account? So I think that's the, the response would be that if we identify funds and we're gonna block, basically accrue funds for the purchase, if we do need the match, will that carry over into the next budget year?
That's my understanding, yes, whatever is...
That's what your fund balance is, that you're seeing on the consolidated budget.
I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but I understand what Councilman Hood is saying, because if you're gonna allocate $250,000, you almost have to, and that's instead of aside, 'cause I'm assuming you wanna get the match, so, you can't spend it again, and so, do you accrue it and do you carry it over?
What we have done time and time again is if we have funds remaining in any grant projects, the remainder of the funds return to the Grant Match Fund, and that's why often, and in past years, there's often been a running fund balance in that, and that's what you see on your consolidated budget each year, is the fund balance. What Jason is speaking to is how much we actually are allowed to appropriate during the fiscal year.
Exactly the same.
And, this is not being appropriated. What we're trying to do is make you aware of, we have the potential to appropriate this in, in future times.
But you still have to accrue it, because if you're, you're not gonna go out and, and find $2 million worth of, um, uh, grants and match it when you don't have the funding, so you're not gonna overextend, 'cause if you get, if you get the grants, then you have to at some point execute.
Correct. You either have to, at that point, you either have the opportunity to execute that contract and to appropriate those funds, or you can...
Or say no.
Say no, correct.
I get it.
And so that's why, that's why we always, we, in the past, we have always gone through and put, at any time, there's an application that may involve a match, we have always come to the council, so that you're aware of, okay, we're putting in the application at this time, it may come up. If we win the grant, that's when the funds are appropriated, but we come back to you at that time with the contract and with your permission to enter into that contract.
So maybe in the future, this is the last thing, maybe in the future, we should only ask for the funds to be, uh, to apply for the grant, and maybe not the park where we're signing all forms, you know, because at that point, we're, we're gonna have to ask to do that again anyway, right? You know what I mean? As far as the, the contracts or whatever, we'd have to ask to do that again anyway, so maybe we're just asking...
Well, I, excuse me, if you don't mind me interjecting here, I, I personally like to see that that money's there, them ask for it, because I think it could be a little misleading, and it, it may not be as important to you, but it is important to me. I'm not putting words in your mouth by any stretch, but I'm, I'm okay with it being there, and, and again, I'm not trying to belabor the point and make it very difficult, but when I recall back on my budget, the, the $250,000, and I understand that this is preliminary, and we have a long way to go, but, uh, I just wanna get ahead of the game a little bit.
We've always done both, just to make sure that you're aware of what we're actually submitting. In the past, that was not done, and I think sometimes the council was caught unaware of these applications were even out there, that you even had potentially funds that were gonna become due or called for at a later date.
Any other questions, Patrons? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Carried.
Item number seven, a resolution, one, approving submission of a grant application to Lake Poncharine Basin Foundation, I'm sorry, Restoration Program for $75,000 to replace and install emergency generators and automatic transfer switches at the municipal lift stations, two, agreeing to a cash match of up to $25,000, and three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents, Charles.
Uh, this grant, right now, we're looking at replacing, I'm, I'm sorry, upgrading, um, the generators at three of our lift stations, lift station number 10, which is out off of South Morrison and C.M. Fagan, lift station 22, which is out by North Oak Park, and lift station 39, which services West Hammond, is out by the Wynn Dixie Facility. Um, the match here is an up-to amount, so we may not actually end up matching fully $25,000, and that money could come from the Grant Match Fund, or it could come from the Water and Sewer Budget.
I think we talked about that coming from the Water and Sewer Budget, not Grant Match.
Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number eight, a resolution approving the application to Keep Louisiana Beautiful for, for a healthy communities grant of $10,000 to replace, install waste receptacles and encourage personal and community responsibility for a cleaner, more suitable Hammond, two, agreeing to an in-kind match of $2,500, and three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents.
Right. So this one's pretty simple, um, every year, we have an opportunity to apply to Keep Louisiana Beautiful for these healthy community dollars, we do it through Keep Hammond Beautiful. Um, this year, we're looking at purchasing as many as 20 waste receptacles for downtown Hammond, busy streets, and possibly our parks. Uh, the match here is in-kind, uh, we usually meet this requirement in one or two cleanups, um, just given the number of people that show up and how many hours they work.
Motion to approve.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 1307 Martin Luther King Drive, 87% damage located in Council District 1, the owners are Brenda Lee and Yolanda Hor Ciprin and Adair Asset Management LLC, Rosewood Place Number 5. Mr. Mitchell, how are you?
Good evening, how are you all?
Good.
That information would be toward the end of the agenda for demolition, I have a few changes to make. For item number one, 1307 Martin Luther King Drive, 87% damage, recommendation is to demolish.
Do we have anyone here representing the owners of this property? All right.
Motion to approve.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number 11, a resolution, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 109 Reed Street, 100% damage located in Council District 3.
Skip 10.
I skipped 10?
Yeah.
My bad. Item number 10, a resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at 403 South Cypress Street, 61% damage located in Council District 2, the owner is E.K. Robb LLC, 608 West Robert Street.
Uh, made conversation with, with this particular owner, uh, they want to pursue a partial demolition themselves, to remove some valuable items out of there and to retain some of the architectural wood and structural, uh, members of the structure. We, uh, want to, um, recommend demolition on this, uh, particular occasion there, to acquire demolition permit no later than the, uh, 1st of May, that would be prior to the 30-day grace period, and, uh, proceed with their demo. Our recommendation is to, uh, do demolition.
Is it 30 days?
As standard normal, right, so what, what'll happen, they'll, they'll come in prior to the, uh, expiration of 30 days and proceed with demolition themselves.
And they've agreed to demolition?
Correct, by email, they've contacted the mayor and administration and said you attorney to do so.
Is anyone here representing the owners of this property? All right. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Carried.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing demolition of a property located at 109 Reed Street, 100% damage located in Council District 3, the owner is Harris Bates, 109 Reed Street, Hammond.
Also, a recommendation of demolition for 109 Reed Street, 100% damage.
Is anyone here representing that property? All right. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 110 West Green Street, 91% damage located in Council District 3, the owner is Rodney D. Adams, Hammond.
110 West Green, uh, 91%, recommendation is to demolish.
Anyone here representing this property?
Motion to approve.
Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 111 East Newman Street, 86% damage located in Council District 3, the owner is First Family Financial Service, AKA City Financial Servicing, Bridget C. Byrd, Corporate Boulevard, Baton Rouge.
Also, 111 East Newman, all owners were notified, 86% damage, our recommendation is to demolish.
Anyone here representing that property?[1765.62]
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 200 East Stanley Street, 89% damage located in Council District Three. The owners are Valanca, I know I murdered that name, Al and BMO Harris, Minneapolis, Minnesota.
200 East Stanley, 89% damage, also recommendation for demo.
Anyone here representing that property? Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 402 Washington Avenue, 91% damage located in Council District Three. The owner is Xena R. Washington, Hammond.
The owner is present on this location, 402 Washington Avenue. I do have a photograph, that should be the top location that we passed out. They have torn off all of the damaged rafters and roof rafters, decking, as well as the ceiling joists. So all that's been removed. The exterior walls are cinder block, and it is a slab foundation. So they've torn off all of the damaged material. The desire of the owner is to hire a state-licensed contractor, commercial contractor, and restore the structure. It's gonna be a long shot, but she is here. I think she might wanna have some comments about what her plans are. We've explained that she's gonna have to have a state-licensed contractor, as well as plans and designs meet the criteria for extensive renovation. She says that's what she wants to do, so I want to give her an opportunity to ask.
You can, I'm sorry, can you come up here, ma'am? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Xena R. Washington, Hammond, Louisiana, Post Office 5845.
Tell us what you plan on doing with the property.
I'm planning on renovating the building and using it for like an all-occasion building. And I do have some contractors that I'm talking to in doing it, and I want to work with the private to try to get this done.
Is this a home for an all-occasion building?
It currently is not. This was just thrust to the bonus today. I actually met with her this afternoon. I'm sure city planner and building official Josh, at the time that she acquires a contractor, will have to go through the normal process of permitting. It would be her responsibility, as well as the contractor, to submit the proper plans and everything that's required to do so, along with a request for change of zoning, to see if that's feasible. I've explained to her that it's a long shot, but that's what she wants to pursue.
Ms. Washington, I would just remind you that repairing the building does not guarantee rezoning.
But it's, I thought it's commercial property and it's a business building.
I mean, I don't, Josh?
It was legally non-conforming, but it's been, when it gets demolished or removed or loses that grandfather permission, it has to revert to what the existing zoning allows, which is-
We've been paying, been paying the business tax for 27 years.
I don't know all the galvanities, I just want to make sure you're aware that you need to make sure you have all that lined up before you spend any money on repairing the building, because just repairing the building is not gonna guarantee that you get a rezoning or get to use that building as a, and again, I don't know what the zoning is, I don't know where it's located. I just want to make sure that you don't spend money on a building that you cannot use as you intend.
Well, it won't be just for that. I'm in ministry too, and they just built a church right around the corner three years ago.
Okay.
And that's way after that building was established.
Why wouldn't we not ensure a zoning requirement before we go through that whole process? I mean, to me, that would be the steps that I would want to take. I would wanna make sure it goes through the zoning board and get even approved or that a recommended for that before we do anything. To me, because, you know, it's not a mixed-use community, it's a residential neighborhood.
It's residential.
So if it's zoned residential, then how would we even?
It's, I don't know.
I think, you know, just, I think it's already zoned residential.
Not that property right there.
It's zoned residential.
It's zoned residential, so why would we even start the process when we know we're in a residential zoning area?
Bobby, is the property safe right now? I mean, is it-
It's secured because of the perimeter walls, it's cinder block, they're not falling apart, the mortar is holding it solid, so it's safe. The roof that was removed in the initial photograph, this photograph that I just gave you shows that it's been, all the damaged rafters and joists have been removed.
What is the rezoning process timeline? I haven't done it in a while, so-
It's gonna take at least two months. I think the deadline, Josh probably has passed for this particular-
She's misnamed, which means she'll go to planning commission first week of June.
June.
She'll probably be middle of July.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is, Bobby, are you okay with that, since she has kinda started?
What I would want to have is, first of all, we need to make sure that a contractor would be willing to do such an extensive repair, the first thing, so it would qualify her for even the possibility, if the building is repaired, to actually do the rezoning. So that's, it all has to coordinate together, and I think we should, I'm wanting to put the burden on the owner to bring in all of that paperwork documentation that would solidify that and prove to Josh and myself that it's possible.
So minimum is a 90-day process, minimum.
Minimum, minimum.
That's what I'm asking you, are you satisfied with the state of the building, that it's not a public safety issue?
All the openings closed.
No, it's pretty safe. There's a metal door on the front, and she's made sure it's deadbolt locked, it's secure. The roof, dangerous part of the building has been removed.
So if the council decided to give her 90 days, should I start working on that right now? Couldn't waste any time. You'd have to get a contractor, you'd have to go meet with Josh and get started right away. Because once that, if the 90 days expires, and I can't speak for the whole council, but I'm fairly sure if the 90 days expired and you haven't made significant progress, then we're gonna, we probably would vote to demolish.
Counsel, Mr. President, she's probably gonna get 30 days, because I would imagine that she's gonna wanna make sure that it's gonna even be approved to be zoned before-
Well, that's what I'm saying, that process-
So that's a 60-day process right there, so-
I think it's probably-
Well, I think Josh has said 60 days at a minimum, just for the-
Yeah, minimum.
For just for the-
That's what she starts right now.
No, no, we're talking about for the approval of the zoning.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, which only gives her now 30 days, if you're saying 90 days of start construction, 'cause I mean-
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, I'm saying 90 days, the whole process. Let's freeze our process for 90 days to give her time to go through rezoning. If it doesn't get rezoned, it's moot point, unless she wants to rebuild it as, you know-
Residential.
And then she'll probably have to tear it down and start over again. So, no, my question was, let's freeze it for 90 days, let her, if Bobby's okay with the state of the building, and then I'll give her 90 days to start the process, which you need, again, it probably will take 60 days. If we give you 90 days, it gives you a little time, and again, I can't speak for the whole council, I'm just trying to give you the benefit, you know, and let you try to do what you want to do. There's no guarantee, again, that the rezoning will be approved.
Why don't we do this, for sake of historical neglect on the process and not moving forward with it, why don't we do the 45 days, demolish with option to repair for 45 days, and if she provides the city permit office with the necessary documentation that she needs to move forward with it, then we could do an extension, in-office extension, contingent upon her responsibility of doing what she needs to do.
Counselor, if, that's your recommendation?
Well, we would allow you 45 days to start the process. If you're sincere about it, you gotta do it, we'll come back.
But to start which process, Bobby, which process?
The process of securing a contractor, assuring that someone would actually want to do the renovation. I mean, if there's, it's not gonna be a renovation, and there's no need to do rezoning, because it's not gonna be a completion of the structure. Those coincide together, the rezoning request as well as the construction. She could always do it as a church, it's zoned for a church.
Right, either way, I'm doing it as, if I can.
But you still gotta find a contractor, I understand what you're saying.
Correct, correct.
Whatever, I mean, I'm okay with whatever you're arguing, Bobby. I understand. Motion to that extent.
Make a motion to approve with a 45-day timeframe.
With the option to repair.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Good luck, Ms. Eve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 1,002 Natchez Street, 99% damage located in Council District Three. The owners are Georgia Mae Carter, Edall, CEO of Cara of Georgia and Carter, Hammond.
1002 Natchez, recommendation is to demolish, 99%. This owner has acquired a mobile home permit, a new mobile home permit, to replace the existing mobile home. Surely they're in the process of swapping those out. We still want to go ahead and do our security demolition on it, just in case they change their minds.
Is anyone here representing that property?
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 1002 Varnado Street, 99% damage located in Council District Three. The owner is Z.T. Washington and Cara of Francis Perkins, 2236 Litchwood Lane, Harvey.
1002 Varnado, you know, did get a call from this owner. They are in favor of demolition. Their intentions are is to try to have it demolished to the 30-day deadline. We want to recommend demolition for this location.
Is anyone here representing that property?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Mr. President, can I ask you a question before we go on? Just, if a property is demolished and you remove a trailer, and now that's a vacant lot, how long does that vacant lot hold the, I guess, the-
Grandfathered.
So that lot can be grandfathered forever for, so I just wanna understand that, because I just wanna make sure I understand that, because if we tear it down and now it's demolished and now it's a vacant lot, does that automatically give that lot the right to put a trailer back there, or is it done within a certain timeframe?
We have a mobile home ordinance that regulates that, whether it's demolished or moved voluntarily, whatever the situation is. If it's what's considered as legally non-conforming, which means it may not have the proper zoning for a mobile home, but it has an existing mobile home there. It has 60 days, 60, six months, excuse me, six months to replace that mobile home that's been removed.
So if a new mobile home is not replaced, not re, not put there within six months, then it loses that grandfather?
That's correct. Unless it's properly zoned, it may be properly zoned for mobile home, which is RS 11A, or it may be in a mobile home park.
We put that down, and if it's not done within a certain timeframe, then that means that that lot now cannot have a mobile home.
This particular address is properly zoned for mobile home. It has been rezoned, it's also in a proposed area. So in this case, I was just answering your question as to what the rules would be if it were not properly zoned, but this one is in that case.
So that's zoned for a mobile home?
For a mobile home, yes.
Under the new zoning, is that right? I don't think so. I don't think that, is that correct?
We're sure.
Josh?
It's, yeah.
I don't think we had any areas zoned for mobile homes at all. I thought the new ordinance required to be-
No, we changed the terminology of the zoning.
RS 11A, that's what it was.
Right, but that's zoned in mobile home parks.
No, RS 11As throughout the city.
Throughout the city.
Right.
But they have to file an act, mobile home ordinance, gotta be a certain age-
Correct.
And the condition.
Correct, right.
Correct.
What happened, Counsel, I think what you're thinking in terms of is that it was eliminated citywide, but the RS, which used to be residential suburban, was converted to the RS 11A. So all of those were existing RSs, still have that permission for mobile home usage.
Okay, if you don't mind, just in the near future, just shoot me an email on that particular property that's zoned, if you don't mind.
The 1002 Natchez, sure.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Number 18, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located 1103 South Pine Street, 97% damage located in Council District Three. The owner is Warren Griffin Jr., Yellowwater Road, Hammond.
This is one that's been totally demolished, we have by the owner. We just took a photograph of it yesterday, can actually remove them, assuming, city attorney probably can remove that, just remove that from the agenda.
Motion to remove item number 18.
Make a motion to move item 18 from the agenda.
That's second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Item number 19, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 1214 Blackburn Extension, 100% damage located in Council District Four. The owner is Louis D. Barca, 1210 Blackburn Extension, Hammond.
This, actually, you have a photograph of that as well. It's actually considered as debris. They pulled it down on yesterday. It's no longer a demolition, it's just trash and debris. I can remove that. We will notify them for trash and debris if it hasn't been cleared in the next week.
So we need to pull this, remove this one as well? No motion to remove item number 19.
Make a motion.
Roll, roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Item number 20, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 2709 Anderson Street, 86% damage located in Council District Four. The owners are Instant Finance and LLC and Continental Resources. Bobby?
District number four, 2709, we've been waiting on this one for quite some time. 86% damage, our recommendation is to demolish.
Anyone here representing that property? All right.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you, Bobby.
Also, the fourth photograph that you have would display the last council meeting of submission of demolitions, August of last year, showing where those four structures have been removed. The city hired on the top three by contractor, and the owner demolished the last one.
Mr. Mitchell, thank you for your diligence and hard work. I really appreciate Sanders Avenue.
Yes.
Been a long-
Looks great, huh?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, final adoption of ordinance, item number one, final adoption of an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code regarding the duties and authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Recommended approval by Planning and Zoning Commission.
So move.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Carrie.
Item number two, final adoption of orders to approve rezoning request by Infinite Investments LLC to rezone Lot 8 and Block 78 of the Higher Survey, located at 306 South Oak Street from RM 2 to MX, in accordance with a survey by William J. Bowden, recommended approval by zoning commission.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Item number three, final adoption of orders to approve rezoning request by Plan State Incorporated, Clarence and Linda Whittington, to rezone a 90-foot by 60-foot parcel in the southeast quarter of Section 26, Township 6, South Range 7 East, located at 506 JW Davis Drive from RS 3 to RM 3, recommended approval by zoning commission.
So move. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Item number four, final adoption of an orders to approve rezoning request by White Oaks Enterprise Incorporated and clients in Linda Whittington to rezone .568 acres, Lot 1 of the Whittington subdivision, a lot measuring 203.51 feet by 332.51 feet, and .75 acres being located at 205, 203, 113, and 109 White Street from RM2 to RM3. Recommended approval by zoning commission.
So move.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Introduction of an order set public hearing. Number one, introduction of an order to approve rezoning request by Vincent R. Robeek, I'm sorry, F. Robeek from, is that I or L? One, one L?
IL.
IL to CH for a parcel approximately 255 feet by 313 feet, running on Tower Drive, located at 1635 Highway 190 East in accordance with Tower Commercial Park, recorded 9/28/1987. Recommended approval by zoning commission.
Owner wants to rezon from industrial light to commercial heavy, which is actually a down zoning, or I guess a more restrictive zoning. The reason being, he has some commercial park ideas in there, and the lot size is for commercial much more favorable than industrial. Industrial requires 125 or 150-foot lots. They're pretty big. And that's, that's not really feasible if you're looking to do a subdivision of any sort, so...
Motion to introduce. Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
So a motion to adjourn. All in favor.